It's like 10 minutes out of schedule then.
Good to go.
That's a good thing. All right, good morning to everyone. We're going to call it an order of the November 12th Board of Commissioners meeting. This morning, we got Pastor Pat Kelly here from Linton Church of Christ for our opening prayer.
Morning, Pat.
Morning. Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for another day that you have allowed us to live. A beautiful day with new blessings from you every day. Father, we just want to thank you. We're grateful for the things that you have given us here in Davies County. We're thankful for the men and women that are willing to serve on the council and the commission. Father, we just pray that you will help them to make the wisest decision and the best use of their time and the money that is given. We're thankful for the things that we have, the nice building, the new building that's being renovated. And Father, you blessed us so much at this time of the year when it's Thanksgiving and many people remember the blessings. We want to do that every day of our life and just humbly thank you for the gifts that you have given to us. May we use them wisely. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Pat. All right, first up, we have the courthouse renovation update. Derek, good morning.
Morning. Good morning, everybody. Appreciate you giving me time this morning to give you a quick update on the courthouse project. So as you've driven by the past couple of weeks, we've hit a couple of big milestones. The big one, roofing is nearing completion. We've got a couple of things to button up here and there, but keep a dry building makes life a lot easier with the weather coming up. The other thing, we had a road shut down a couple of weeks ago, got the rooftop HVAC unit installed. That's a big deal for us. So getting that there, getting it on time, allowing us to proceed with stuff going on inside the building. Next big milestone we're going to be coming up on, actually started yesterday, started replacing the windows. So that'll make a big difference as you drive by. That'll take about a month, a little bit over a month to get that done. And then from there, moving inside, the third floor, progressing along very nicely, plaster is wrapping up. Paint's probably about 75% complete. A couple of rooms got first three coats going on. Continuing there, finishes is really the big push now. Second floor is plaster is wrapping up. We're pushing along, getting painter down there. First floor, that's where everything kind of bottlenecked. So finishes, third floor, tiles going on, bathroom walls, fixtures are going to go up. Light fixtures are going to start going up. As we continue on, we're going to keep pushing the electrical side of things, the mechanical side of things, getting those towards to a point where they're ready to test. So understanding, our last big hurdle for the project is getting the primary electrical gear that's currently scheduled to show up the end of March. That puts us really, really close to our substantial completion date of April 17th. The plan there, working with the electrical contractor, is to push to have everything in a position where we get the electrical gear in, flip a switch.
When you say electrical gear, what piece are you talking about?
So this is the, we'll call it the heart of the building. So the utility service comes into the building. This is the piece that sits there to distribute all the power to the rest of the building. So obviously very crucial to the project and getting at such a late period of the project causes problems. Working with Mel K., the electrical contractor, having all the systems in place to where, waiting for that gear to show up. All the primary feeds being pulled to all, being pulled to that gear location and being able to essentially flip a switch.
Was it a lead time issue or an order time issue?
Yes. Yes, so.
That's an either/or question.
Yeah. So lead time, it's a problem across all projects right now with that particular gear. There was an issue with the ground fault arc study, essentially making sure the gear meets the standards of the engineer, make sure it's going to work out. Ball has dropped a little bit on the front end there, kind of pushing this process out a little bit. So trying to overcome that, working with Mel K., we asked if we could get a push on the material itself. Unfortunately, square D was, is not playing ball. So that's kind of where we're at. But trying to work around that and get this thing done on time is of my utmost importance to me. So from there, budget wise, we're good. No changes to the construction budget. Contingency, we're sitting at $238,602. We're still a good spot considering where we're at in terms of progress, getting into finishes as that goes along. One thing I'd like to, I plan to do with your guys' permission, the judges benches, we're working towards putting those together. And before we get too far along with that, with the trim work and getting materials onsite, like to build a mock-up and get the judges' blessing. Make sure it's good before we get to a point where it becomes costly to revise that layout. So.
How much would, how much would that mock-up cost?
Nothing. It'll be an in-place mock-up. They're going to build the third floor mock-up, not put any finishes on it. It's essentially to get the height and the rail, make sure the judges are cool with how everything looks and proceed from there. So no additional cost.
Okay.
I think it's, I recommend it just for the fact that we get too far down the road and a judge doesn't like sightline. Rather not have to rework stuff. So.
I'm fine with that. Process done.
All right. So that's where we're at with courthouse. Any questions?
Okay. No, it sounds good. I mean.
When you were doing the roof, did you pull the bell off the top?
Yes, the bell is sitting in the parking lot right now. Been working with Scott to get that relocated. Awesome bell. I'd like to see something come up toward the end of this project if we have funds to do something cool. I think that's a really neat historical thing that you don't get to see very often. So.
You know, that's a good point. I didn't see Scott snare in the hallway. We might be able to pull that Bell Plaza back together that we had originally discussed. Okay.
I'd like to see that happen.
I'll reach out to Scott and see if it's, maybe we can coordinate that Bell Plaza design and. Okay. All right. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Sounds good.
Thanks, Derek.
I appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
Good report, no surprises.
Okay, next steps, a meeting minutes from October 22nd. Were there any changes that needed to be made?
None.
None? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. Okay, next up, we got the Highway Department. Morning, Chris.
I might be a little bit of a mess today, so I'll try to get through it. First up, I guess we got the accepting, awarding the highway bids, annual highway bids. And we went through everything and I don't want to say they're all over the place, but they're kind of all over the place with the different vendors. And I think it'd be in the best interest of the county if we just accept all bids with having the due diligence of being, taking the lowest responsible bid and responsive bid. So that's kind of what we had thought. We've done it before. I know it'd be nice to pick out certain vendors, but the overall picture, there was maybe a couple vendors that we won't be looking to buy very much from, but they do have some products that we use and are lower. So we don't want to completely leave them out, but we will, we will seek and do the, be responsible for the lowest bid and the responsive bid.
All right, I entertain, and that's on the highway materials?
Yes.
Okay, I entertain a motion to accept the bids on the highway materials and we'll use the, basically the best of each option.
Right. So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
And then the next was the countywide, presenting the countywide bridge inspection to the Commissioners from SJCA, which is Ronald Munoz and Michael Stevenson is here with him. So I'll let them present it to you guys and go over it.
Thanks, Chris.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ronald Munoz. I'm the Bridge Inspection Department Man for the SJCA. Happy to be today. Happy.
Thank you.
And also for our hard deliverables, there's two binders. They're the tree killing ones that we talked about in the past. I can give both of them to Chris unless.
Do you need one in your office? Probably, yeah. Need one for the August office.
So I have a short little presentation to tell you about their findings. You can flip to the next. Yeah, so basically, SJCA was hired to conduct the Davies County Wide Bridge Inspection from 2023 through 2026. This is a requirement by Federal Highway Administration. All of the bridges are required to be inspected every 24 months. If you aren't compliant, then the FHWA covers 80% of the contract cost. So for this contract, we were in charge of Phase 1 2023 and Phase 1A that was conducted in 2024. In both of these phases, there were 126 bridges that were inspected. All of the field work was performed in June and we are now delivering the results of our findings five months later, which is in compliance with the Bridge Inspection Manual requirements. So the first slide that you see up here is the condition of the Davies County bridges. I just want to point out that on that poor line, there are zero bridges in Davies County that are rated poor. That's a testament to the good work that the Highway Department is doing here. They're making sure that they're maintaining those bridges and keeping them from falling into that lowest rating category. Next is posted bridges. If you look, there's 34 bridges that are posted in Davies County. That's about 27% of your inventory. If you kind of follow that over to all Indiana counties, you can see that the average for other counties is about 13%. So the question becomes, why are twice the amount of bridges posted in Davies County? I did some digging and we'll kind of get into that, but basically 40% of the bridges that are posted in Davies County are concrete channel beam bridges. Those were built from about 1959 to 2002. And then the other 26% are railroad flatcars. They were built from 1989 to 1994. And then to conclude, there's only one bridge on a 12-month frequency inspection, so that's why you have the Phase 1A. That bridge, my understanding, is it's going to be replaced soon and if that happens, basically we'll only be out here every two years, which will be a cost savings to the county. Again, a contribution to the good work that the highway department's doing. Next slide. So part of the requirements for the bridge inspections is to put together a list of replacement and a list of rehab bridges. On the top is the list of replacement bridges. There's about $4.4 million worth of replacement work. My understanding is that some of these are already on the list to be replaced. And then there's the rehab work. There's about $835,000 of rehab work that needs to be done. Rehab work can be difficult to find. Typically, we like to find bridges that have a poor superstructure. So the top is bad with a good substructure, so the bottom is good because then we can just take off the top and put a new one in. There's not too many opportunities for that, hence most of them are on the replacement side as opposed to the rehabilitation side. Next slide.
Chris, assuming the funding's not the opt, assuming funding and the Cambridge Fund allows it, can you go back a slide? Whoever, not sure. Okay. Is there enough capacity in the marketplace to do that number of bridges in each, like in 26, for instance, if I read that correctly?
I think that the numbers, which I haven't talked to Ronald on it, but them are engineers' estimates. I don't think they cover the cost of a bridge. Bridge number 95 on there is half a million dollars. But if we were to do the rehab on that, and I'm actually going to talk about that bridge today, it'd be like a $2.3 million project. I don't understand the, I don't understand the estimated cost. Maybe Ronald or Michael can speak on that a little bit.
I'm thinking I'm confused. So on the bridge posting, that's, is that the weight, that's the weight limit? That's not the number of bridges?
Right, on the bridge posting, that's the weight limit.
Okay, I thought that was the number of bridges.
And then the first, the top part of that list is your replacement bridges and the bottom is your rehabilitation bridges. And the 1, 2, 3 is whatever your priority. 162, like if you look at bridge number, just the last three digits there, 162 is the bridge that we've actually already, that's the one I think it's on a 12-month cycle. Is that 162?
Yeah.
We've already got that bridge in house. We just need to put it up. But the prices are a little different. So I was thinking, if you're looking at the priority list of rehabilitation for $835,000, that's not going to put them two bridges in.
No, I was confused. I thought, I thought that was the number of bridges that needed to be replaced instead of the weight limit. It's like, is there enough capacity in the marketplace to fix that many in a year?
Oh, okay, I got you.
So we can move on. I was mistaken. So thank you for that clarification.
As far as those estimated costs though, Chris, there's actually a formula that's recommended by FHWA for calculating those and that's what we use as a first step. And then our engineers will use their judgment to kind of move it up or down based on that. But FHWA is updating that formula within the next two years because it is averaging a little bit low because of inflation and other factors. I can go to the next slide. So the age of Davies County bridges. So what's going to happen with Davies County bridges long-term? As I mentioned, 73% of the bridges posted are due to two types of bridges that were constructed. One's a concrete channel beam bridge and the other one is the railroad flatcar. The other 20%, 27% of the posted bridges in Davies County are just because they're old. So what does that mean? So basically, anytime you construct a bridge, there's budget and value judgments that have to be made. And it looks like, if you look at the bottom table, you'll see that from 1959 to 2002, there were 37 concrete channel beam bridges built. And then there was a five-year span around 1994 that there were 10 railroad flatcars that were built. So if you look, that table shows how many bridges were built in each five-year period. And a lot of that orange, 73% of those posted bridges, is due because of those two types. So if Davies County had made different budget and valutary judgments, then it could be the case that the bridge inventory, that only 7% of the bridges would have been posted today if those two bridge types had been avoided. So as though, typical, the typical lifespan of a bridge is about 50 years. You can see that those still have some life on them, again, because the Highway Department's doing a good job of maintaining everything. But in about 15 to 20 years, that large peak will come due. So you've got some time to prepare for it. But in about 15, 20 years, there's going to be quite a few bridges that need to be replaced. Next slide. So as far as Costco, SJC has experience helping counties out with getting funding. There are programs where 80% of the federal, sorry, there are programs where the Fed will reimburse 80% of projects and there are also projects where the state will reimburse 75%. If these are taken advantage of, it could mean a cost reduction of $3.9 to $4.2 million for Davies County. Just wanted to conclude by saying it's been a pleasure working with Davies County for the past six years. And at SJCA, we view ourselves as an extension of the Highway Department and thanks for letting us help out with maintaining and keeping the bridges safe for the traveling public. If there's no questions, I'll sit down.
Any questions, Commissioners? No, it sounds great. I think in five or 10 years, we'll need to get that bridge improvement plan started and start throwing things down. All right, thank you.
Yeah, that, I mean, that was a good, that was probably the best bridge inspection report that I think we've had with the slideshow and everything. The estimates on there, is that construction-only estimates? Is that what them are? Because that's total?
Yeah, that's why they're adjusting.
Yeah, so I know they're low and it's nothing, that's the formula that SJCA has in place by the state to do. But in reality, it's going to be higher than that. And so I'd bring me to my next one here. If I can find my, find my stuff here. So bridge number 95, and if you look at their priority list, which I don't have a slideshow or anything, bridge number 95 was in the rehabilitation part of it. And, thank you. And so we're wanting to apply for a federal grant and that's Laura Phillips here and she'll maybe come up, I don't know. And we'll talk about that and request to the Commissioners. So to do that, federal grant to rehabilitate that bridge, and it's a superstructure replacement, the engineering estimate is $2.8 million. The county's local match would be $562,000. And 80% federal would be $2,248,000. That's one of our longest bridges that we have, 975 North. It's east of Raglesville. And it's posted for a 2027 fix is when it's, when they're saying that bridge has to be fixed. And so we've talked a lot about the five-year program on roads and stuff. And I think like incoming Commissioner TC, we were talking about having a five-year program on other things. And we do, maybe it's not all spelled out and it changes from year to year, but that, so this bridge would be kind of on our forecast. Eventually, that bridge is going to go bad and we're going to have to come up with the money to fix it. And we would like to start now, by this fall here, starting, I think it started the first of the month, applying for a federal aid grant. And Lockmueller would be assisting us with the federal aid grant to rehabilitate that bridge with a $500 contract for them to gather all the information and help assist with the, with the application for that federal grant. And then the build date would be, I think, 2030 is the build date on that. And then in turn, in doing that.
The Raglesville Bridge?
The Raglesville Bridge. In turn, in doing that, so I had confidence that we're going to say yes, I guess. Because on my 2025 budget, on my capital outlays for Bridge 95, we put $40,000 in there, started budgeting towards that bridge. And it's kind of the five-year plan. It's thinking ahead. I don't want to wait till five years and say, hey, we need to come up with a half a million dollars to do this bridge. So if we get the okay today, we pursue the grant and then we kind of start, or whatever you want to call it, sandbagging the money or putting in that account. And then funds will come out of that account during this five years as you're doing engineering, preliminary engineering and stuff like that. And I don't think we've got to do any right-of-way work, but. So I don't know if you want to hear from Laura, if she wants to present it to you? The contract for that bridge rehabilitation?
Did a good job. I just wanted to come in case there was questions. It is the NDOT federal grant that we're going to go after and that we've used multiple times for different things. So, and it is open now. It opened last week and the applications closed December 5th. So our clock is ticking to get it in. Yeah. I don't know if you guys have any questions about the process or anything.
No, not at all. I think it's great to get, be proactive and, I mean, I think we can all attest, 2030 will be here in a flash. Time, time really does go by fast. So, yeah, yeah, I see. Let's get started. Commissioners, if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the contract with Lockmueller for the.
Pursue the application for the federal, for Bridge Number 95.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. Thanks for the help, Laura.
Thanks, Laura.
And then if you ask why we pursue that bridge, like I said, it's a, it's a long bridge and we can do bridges in-house, our guys. The top three bridges in the county was the Washington Bridge on 15th Street and it's been taken care of. Montgomery Bridge on 3rd Street, it's been taken care of. And the top bridge on the list from SJCA is 162. And that's actually, we call it a bridge because it's over 20-foot, but it's a big culvert with a dog leg in it and a big dip in the middle of it. And we've actually purchased the box and our bridge crew will be installing that. We wanted to get it done in 2024. Things happen. We may not get it done until 2025.
Is that on 900 East?
Yes, it's on 900 East. So part of the 900 East corridor that we're wanting to construct from, from Old 50 going, going south to 7.
700.
700 South, yeah. It's between 6 and 700 South, so that needs to be replaced before we send traffic down there. And it's, it's your needed replacement, according to the bridge inspection, was 2025. For, the next four bridges in line.
It was good timing on upgrading that road.
Yeah, it's good timing. The next four bridges on that line are the, like Ronald referred to, they're the railcar bridges. They're short, shorter spans, not as long. They're basically what they say they are. They're railcars. It's been put over waterways, made into a bridge. So we will be looking to get concrete box structures and probably pull them out and put new box structures in ourselves.
Okay.
So.
Great.
So that's that. Okay, projects update. So we came to an agreement with the, with the Sheriff's Department and the Central Dispatch and Emergency Management and ECS for the radios that they've been talking about. I know Steve's been up here talking about it a lot and the county highway is going to participate in it, help them get their channel and do a little bit different things at the county and on our end to get all of our radios upgraded. I think it was around $4,000 would be the county highways part. And then we would have a service with the ECS and Michael Dyer also. But it would help them achieve what they need to achieve, which would be the overall best for the county to have that public emergency channel. I can't think of what you call it, but, so we did reach an agreement with that and we want to participate with the Sheriff's Department.
Well, just on that note, just really a thank you to Steve and Scott for spearheading this, this radio project. It doesn't sound very exciting from the surface and doesn't make very many headlines, but the, the importance of having that system that can be functional and usable in all aspects of Davies County for those first responders and then tying that back to the Central Dispatch that the Sheriff's Department helped spearhead a number of years ago. Just the, the increase in safety to the constituents of Davies County and no one really knows about it. But I just wanted to keep trying to make that public, but you know, Davies County is going to be much safer. The response times will be as quick as possible, thanks to all this work that, you know, especially Steve, because he didn't really have to do any of this. He volunteered his time and you know, Scott spearheaded it and really appreciate all the effort because it gets complex. And then we've had to realize that the Highway Department's impacted somehow, so we had to figure that, that out and Chris did a great job on that. So it's just hats off for you all working together on that.
And then a couple of other things on our multi-use building, which is our salt sand building, multi-use building. We're going to turn half of it into a bridge shop and we're in the process of making that same half brine makers. We've talked about that before. And we've got the building constructed. We've got a little bit electrical that we've been waiting to do ourselves this winter. And we're going to need a waste oil heater for it. So you know, that wasn't in the initial plans because we didn't know 100% what we were going to need when it first started. It's a salt sand building. We weren't going to heat it. We do have one bay. We put the brine in it. We move our bridge shop over to it to have some room. We're going to need some heat. I got a quote on a waste oil heater, which was like $12,990, I got it written down, $995. So I didn't know if you guys wanted to talk about it or ask if we could buy that out of the building, Commissioners' building fund. And we would, we would install it if we could purchase the heater for that.
Yeah, I mean, I would say we definitely would need, need that and. So yeah, I'm assuming we've got, I'm trying to find it. Oh, here it is. Yeah, we got $21,000 left in that fund, so.
I have no, no problems with that. That'd be good to use that building. And are you guys going to be able to make brine for this, this season?
I would like to, but I doubt we.
Okay.
We was talking about putting, we've got the tanks, but we don't have the brine maker. That's actually on next year's budget to buy a brine maker. We're talking about if we can actually get the tanks put into the building and then buy the brine from somebody so at least have some for this, this year. Yes.
We're still buying from Knox County?
No, they, they quit at making it. That's. No, they, they quit at making it, that's why we got, we bought their system from them, their, their tanks.
Mm-hmm. So Ron, you okay with that coming out?
When we talk about the system, there was actually a trade for asphalt. Has that all been completed with Knox County?
Not a hundred percent, no. They traded a hundred ton of asphalt for the inter-local agreement for the tanks and the brine maker, uh, probably five years ago.
So we got the tank and they haven't gotten the asphalt?
Right.
They got any of the asphalt?
I don't think they've got any, we've, we've talked to them a couple of times.
Have they remembered they've got asphalt coming?
Yes, they've, they've got a new-
They do now, thanks. Commissioner Streeters, probably.
Yeah, they got a new highway supervisor over there. Uh, and, uh, he, he, we've talked to him and I told him what the previous supervisors had made and he, he's wanting it.
Yeah, we want to be good partners, so if we need to remind them, we need to-
Yeah, we did, he was planning on getting it this year and I don't think he has yet.
And that's, we may have to prorate it to today's pricing of asphalt, not two thousand and twenty-two price.
The brine system.
Yeah, no, it's good to get that system, good to barter, so, excellent.
So the heater would be a-
The heater, um, so yeah, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, cover the cost of that waste oil heater out of the county building fund.
Salute.
The motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
And I've got, I think, just two other things. Uh, Nathan and Phil Cornelius at West Boggs have contacted the Highway Department about, uh, paving the parking lot in front of their building where the little putt-putt golf place was. I don't know what the building's actually called. I think when we went in there five or six years ago and we paved the, the roadways through West Boggs, uh, they were wanting us to pave that parking lot, but the parking lot wasn't ready and we weren't, we didn't have time to do it, so we didn't do it. And now they've came back and asked us to pave that. Uh, when we did the agreement with them last time, they had paid for the material and the labor. And then we donated basically the equipment that was used to do them functions. So I figured it up and it'd roughly be, it's just a small parking lot in front of their building. It would take us a day to do it and it would take me about fourteen guys, the whole crew, to do a hundred and twenty-ton of asphalt, a hundred gallons of tack oil and eight hours of labor for fourteen guys. It's like ten thousand, seven hundred and, ten thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and forty-nine cents. Uh, I don't know what that, I'm not saying I have time, I'm not saying I don't have time. Uh, whatever we get tasked with doing, we-
They want to do it this year, then?
They would like to, but I don't know if it works-
Are you guys on, I know you guys are paving right now, where are you at on your paving schedule-wise? Are there any more miles, either half mile, mile?
We're getting ready to, we're actually getting ready to wind down on it. So, uh, we were going to plan, plan on paving till the end of the month, uh, at the end of this month, but not, maybe not full mile lengths of road. And I'll go into that in a minute too. So I don't know that we can get it done this year, uh, but I'm not opposed to trying, uh, to get it done. If not, then if we got the okay to do it, we get it done this year, we do. If we don't, then I'll just have to wait till next year. For cheap labor, that's what you got to do.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, there, it's a, it's a county-owned park for less. I don't, I don't know if there's any, it's a self-sustaining county-owned park. So I, I, I don't have any issue doing it, as long as it's just doing the asphalt and then doing the parking lot and then we're out of there. Any future maintenance, any, I mean, we try to, you know, no good deed goes unpunished sometimes. So I just want to make sure we can get in and get out. And then any future maintenance, it's on that.
And I'm, I'm thinking that, I'm not saying that if we do this parking lot, five years down the road, they might do something and want us to come in and do it.
Yeah.
Uh, but we can't maintain, you know, we get paid to maintain our roads and it takes all year to do that. Uh, I don't think we would want to maintain it, but, uh, you know, we build, we build this parking lot for them and we build that road for them that we paved last year. Their maintenance is, you know, on that has went to zero and we've improved the campground and the facility for twenty years.
Yeah, that's one, I want to make it clear that, look, we, we want to do this as a, as a partner, but then the more times you do it, the more it just feels like we're the road maintenance folks. I just want to keep clarifying to them that, you know, this is a one-off.
That'll have, if they get that done, is there anything else to pave in there?
They're probably eventually going to work down at the pool. I know at one time they were talking about doing that pool parking lot. And I had told them no then because it was a big parking lot. And the way they were wanting to do it was not the way that it needed to be done.
You guys aren't really in the business of paving parking lots, you know, there's different paving road, right?
Right, right.
Well, I, that thing was set up to be self-sustaining. And we helped out, the roads were in desperate shape, but I'd, I'd look at their budget first and see if they just can't afford to pay for it.
I wouldn't mind helping, I wouldn't mind helping one time with this parking lot. And the bigger parking lot like the pool or anything else, they got to do extra, then I think they need to look at their own budget.
I mean, to Ron's point, if they could cover our costs and make it cost neutral for us and, and we can go in and give them a parking lot at cost, which is much less than they can get it in their-
I'd have no problem with that.
I think that, that's a, I think that's a fair, that's a fair rebuttal.
Launch is just a day.
Yeah, it's just one day.
Three days or four days or another, or like the last time it was a week, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a couple of weeks.
Yeah, and that's, takes a lot out of our maintenance because we got, we got a lot of roads to maintain right now, right here before winter.
Okay.
Are you guys starting your crack ceiling and stuff like that too?
Uh, when we're done paving, probably next month.
I think we're comfortable with you reaching out to them, just seeing if they can go ahead and cover our entire cost on that.
Okay, we can do that. Uh, and then for Grant, I was going to ask Grant on behalf of the commissioners if he would maybe, uh, help me out and get an email from, uh, send an email to Michael Costello with the, what is it, the Corning Mine on seven hundred East and kind of get an update. Uh, I've got updates from him, I've got good updates, good intentions. Uh, but the timeline keeps getting pushed back, so maybe if I, you-
His last feedback was that he was finishing up in New Boys County and he'd be up?
Yeah, this fall.
That was like a year ago?
Uh, it might have been maybe half a year ago, six months ago. We just kind of touched base with them to let it know that it's not just me bugging them all the time.
Sure, that'd be great.
We definitely get that mine closed.
So, uh, the last thing is our, I think I've got it here, our CCMG grant for twenty twenty-four. Um, we was awarded that from the, from the, it, through NDOT, uh, was awarded the one point five million dollars. And that was to pave, uh, old US Highway Fifty going west from Washington's Corporation Line to County Road Three Hundred West, Three Hundred West that goes north right at the railroad tracks. Uh, so we was awarded that through the CCMG, uh, grant application twenty twenty-four dash two. And then it was a multi, uh, I don't know what it is, but it was more in one place. So we did that and then Edwardsport Road, which is County Road One Hundred West from the Washington's Corporation Line at the Sports Complex going north, the six hundred north. And then, uh, five hundred north, which is from One Hundred West, Edwardsport Road, going east to the State Road Fifty-seven, which that is the truck route to get to the Purdue Feed Mill and it's, it's pretty busy.
Are you guys going to be able to widen that road for that mile, five hundred north?
Well, so when you was asking if we was done paving a while ago and I kind of was like, eh, you know. So we got that grant and, and what I wanted to touch on that paving is, since we've got that grant now, we would like to go in before we're done paving and make that foot, at least that road from four fifty north going north to five hundred north and then five hundred north-
To the highway.
To the highway, make a, at least a foot wider, eighteen inches, two foot if we can get it. So what we would like to do is go in there, uh, with our grader and, and trench out next to the road and put six inches of base material in. And then when the CCMG grant comes in and the contractor gets there, they will overlay the section of base that we put in.
That's a heavily traveled road anymore, it's not only Purdue anymore, you got the eggs incorporated and you got the melon farms down there. And it's, it's busy, it's, I mean, I don't know how many trucks a day, I'd, I would like to know one of these days.
Well, I, I go, when I go north with my horse trailer, I hate to go that way because if I meet a, I meet a semi, it's, it's tight. Got to make sure the horses have their heads in.
We're going, speaking of head down, we're, we're going to get kicked out of here, here shortly, so-
I'm sorry.
Keep our head down and keep pressing forward.
So I'll let that, we, we did get the one point five million dollars. It's going to cast, cost the county in total for them three roads, uh, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And, uh, the two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars of that will be coming out of the MVH Old Fifty County's budget. And then the, the two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars would be coming out of the Commissioners' County Match Monies for projects. But the Old Fifty project, uh, we want to take out of the funds that we got from the relinquishment and not put that all back on the county and then back to the bridge number ninety-five. Uh, being proactive and thinking ahead, we want to start using our county, uh, Cune Bridge money to do that. So in five years or whatever, we could still utilize the, the county's match monies to pursue road funding and other things to match that. And that's, that's all I've got.
How about the GPC road?
Oh, yeah, I had that on. So the, the GPC road is paved and it's striped. Uh, I haven't got a final bill on it yet and I guess I would submit that to you guys or to Jen?
Yeah, submit it to Jen and then we'll pull that out of the GPC TIF.
Yeah, and it should come in a little cheaper. Uh, we went in there and did some work before they paved it and we've decided not to put shoulder stone on it because it would make it too, too high and we're going to put a couple arrows and stuff on it ourselves. So it should come under, a little bit lower than what the bid was, but they act, they did a really good job on it. That was, that was E and B paving.
Fantastic, nice to get that road down.
Yeah, really is.
Awesome, great, great stuff, a lot of, a lot of great projects in the works, so, great job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we've got Tyler Council, um, for the local outreach suicide survivors. Good morning, Tyler.
Good morning, how are y'all?
Good, thank you.
Appreciate your time today. I'll try to get your time back so we don't get kicked out of here, I don't want to be the troublemaker. So, um, through the coroner's office, in an effort to expand and enhance our services and the different provisions that we provide to our community of survivors, we would like to apply for a ten thousand dollar grant through the Indiana Association of Peer Recovery and Support Services to develop a two-to-three-person team ideally for local outreach for suicide survivors or a lost team. So what we are seeing currently, I'd sent you a pre-package of information. We're at about a fifty percent increase in suicides. We see anywhere from about two to four, two to five suicides annually, unfortunately. I'm not even talking about our homicide rate, which has increased to five hundred percent. Remember homicide for me is different from homicide for law enforcement, a person killing another person. So we've just seen a huge influx of cases and suicide is one of those. It's the, uh, top three out of, out of five different causes of death. It's the third leading cause of death within our county, unfortunately. If you look at the loss survivor map, if you look at suicide prevention intervention resources, we just don't have a lot here. We have a little bit from the, uh, hospital. And outside of that, it's piping people to resources in Bloomington and other counties. So the goal would be that this individual acts as a survivor advocate or the individual that is coping with the loss, so the next of kin, their family, basically providing psychological first aid and allowing them to, to be piped into resources. The motto is postvention, is prevention. As we know, when there's a loss through suicide with the family, there's always that high potential that someone else is going to commit suicide within that family or within that extended network of individuals that are tied to that individual. So our goal is to provide that kind of service, essentially triage, see what their needs are, pipe them in and directly connect them to services instead of just giving them handouts and brochures and hoping that they actively pursue it.
So, so this would be overseen by the coroner's office?
Yes.
Okay.
They would be dispatched, they're not a part of any investigative services, they're just an advocate for that individual to make sure that they're supported and sustained and, and maintain some form of resiliency and are able to grieve appropriately.
So the, the ten thousand dollars, what does that cover again?
That's a year of setting up and establishing this, getting resources for the team, you know, everything from if we have kiddos on scene, coloring books, crayons, bottles of water, blankets, getting a couple of t-shirts for these lost team members, things like that, getting it set up. And then sustainability, I mean, the way we have this set with the preliminary budget, it would be the equivalent of the deputy coroner's salary, a hundred and seventy-five dollars a case as they get dispatched. Our goal would be to work with the county health department and work with other counties and make this more regional to sustain this and keep it viable and to minimize any kind of costs on our end, especially from the county side.
If, if we get the grant to create, to develop this lost team, what would you say the annual budget impact would be to plan that?
Very minimal, I would expect a hundred and seventy-five dollars, you're looking at maybe four cases.
Do you, you use your existing personnel?
We would try to use our existing personnel, for example, I, I don't know if anybody knows in here, but I, I am a survivor of suicide, we had a cousin that killed himself a few years ago. So naturally, it kind of rolls in that I would be one of those team members and leading the way on our side. But otherwise, yeah, our goal is to have people in-house that have the expertise and experience and get them trained up. Again, that's my day job, Zero Abuse Project. I work with the State Department of Health on youth and adolescent suicide. We have connections with their division, um, that oversees the suicide and overdose fatality review. And we'd be able to work with them to try and get training for anybody that comes on board with this team.
Got it.
No match required?
No.
It sounds like a great program.
No match, they just want to do it. And in fact, they've reached out to me because I'd kind of preliminarily walked through some of their checklist materials and things. It actually closed about a month ago and they reopened it exclusively for our county. So that tells me that there's at least some interest in trying to serve this region.
Commissioners?
Yeah, I don't have any issue with it.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the application for the grant for the loss program?
Salute.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Thanks, Tyler.
Thank you.
Think you updated as we progressed it? Indeed, thank you. Okay, next up, we've got, um, the WTH Central Dispatch Grant from Sean Scott. Morning, Sean.
Morning. Actually, this proposal's been updated as of this morning. It's the same proposal that you were coming out of. Morning, my name is Sean Scott, I'm the GIS Coordinator for WTH Technology and I'm also the County Service Manager for Davies County as well as the City of Washington. And I'm here to recognize that a grant has been opened up from the Indiana Geographic Information Office, the GIO, for, uh, conversion of your addressing and center lines to be state and federally mandates, uh, state and federal standards, to meet those state and federal standards. Real quick, I'll explain that. Currently, your nine-on-one addressing in roads, uh, are based on a MSAG standard, it's kind of like a ruler and, and the road went from one hundred to five hundred and, you know, everybody had a, if you had an emergency, went into the house, you grabbed the phone, the phone was connected to a wire, wire was connected to a pole and that's how it is. Now we all have cell phones and so it's hard to determine where exactly that location is. So what we're doing here is we're going to be converting all the addresses in Davies County to this state and federal standard that matches with the state's, uh, new nine-one-one system that they have created through AT&amp;T and SNET. What that does is that gives you GPS location to your house. So it'll be a latitude and longitude for your structure versus a line to, to the house. Um, the state, this is the third grant that the state has made available. The first two were through the, uh, nine-on-one board, those did require money to be funded at first. And then there was a match of twenty percent. This grant is going to be fully funded and it's up to thirty thousand dollars. And so I was able to re-get this figured back up to twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four. So there will be no money, uh, that will be required through Davies County. I'll get that, uh, grant, that this one updated, I got to go upstairs to the auditor's office and I'll see if they can print that for me and then I'll make it available for Julie if you'd like to see it. But there's no language that's anything different, it's just the actual, that actual amount.
We're good with this? Okay.
Yeah, we will actually do the grant for, uh, the nine-on-one department. And we just log in with her and we fill it all into a portal. Um, there's going to be nine funded every month, nine counties funded every month. It's going to be open for eighteen months, so you're in a queue. Um, if you're awarded it this month, that's great. If it's next month, you're in a queue to whoever got funded before that, so.
Sounds great, Commissioners, any questions?
Sounds good.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the GIS WTH proposal?
Salute.
Uh, motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we've got the GIS limited agreement, Neighborhood Workshop, City of Washington, going once. All right.
So this has been a request that has been sent over to the county and so they have prepared the paperwork for us. You guys have to do a approval on, for us to be able to release our data to them, for them to put it into their database.
Okay, so it's just a release of data?
Correct.
Data to another stakeholder?
SIDC is-
Okay, any questions, Commissioners? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve that GIS limited use agreement.
Sub move.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. All right. All right, next up, we got the inter-local agreement with the EMA. Scott, you have anything for us on that?
No, it's, uh, same as last year.
Okay, and they basically, they, sorry. The, uh, city of Washington basically uses the, our EMA Director for Management Assistance for the city as well. And, um, they cover a portion of that, uh, three thousand dollars twice a year. So the city pays six thousand dollars on an annual basis and two payments for the EMA services, so. Don't allow anything that you got, let you guys hear. Any questions or discussions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Sub move.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes three zero. Next up, we've got the Visitors Bureau contract. I believe it was submitted maybe a month or so ago. There was a couple of revisions that were asked. Marilyn, would you like to go, to come up in case there's any questions? Um, I believe they added some language regarding, um, annual or bi-annual updates to the Commissioners', um, section nine. Yeah, so there'd be an annual, annual report to the Commissioners on, on this. It'd be a contract with Economic Development Corporation. So I see the changes, that change was made in here. Are there any questions or discussion on the Visitors Commission contract?
I have all kinds of issues with this contract. First off, it's not with the Development Corporation. It seems to be with the Foundation now. Why was that changed?
I think it was a change that the Corporation made initially. Um, I, I didn't make any change to, to that. I just took the initial contract and added the...
Are you, are you, I just want to make sure we got the right version.
Well...
This one says Corporation on...
Well, that's not what was in my packet.
All right, let me show you that one. I mean, I've got three copies here. Let's see here, um, to revise.
I don't think, I, I, I think whether it's Corporation or Foundation, I don't think that's a, a problem. Corporation is what they changed it to, and I think that's...
I do have two different copies here, so, um, I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around which one's correct.
I believe they changed it to Corporation, which was their only change. Is that right?
There was a request by EDC to have that changed to the Corporation from the Foundation.
Okay, because Ron, I do see where it says Foundation on, on this version. The ones with the signature tab says Corporation.
Okay, uh, with the Corporation, I don't know. I've been doing a lot of reflecting, and this is a tough situation because all the people involved want to do the right thing. But I go back and I've been doing a lot of reflecting on Jay Myers and Art Bodie and Tony Witchman and Ken Soliday. And they set it up with the Chamber for certain reasons. And I think those still hold true today. The Corporation is supposed to take care of industrial manufacturing. The Chamber is service and retail, and the Visitors Bureau fits better under the service retail. And then you look at what's gonna happen to the train depot because the Chamber can't handle the depot by itself. It'll probably move it, and that's a tourist attraction in itself, not to mention the railroad, our room they've got. I just, I just don't think it's, I think we're trying to put us where pegging around home. And I don't think it's a good fit for them, so I'll be voting against it.
Okay, I appreciate the comments. Commissioner Taylor, do we, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I think they've done their due diligence, went out and advertised that and everything and had a lot of discussion with their boards and I'm ready to move.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to assign the Contract with the Visitors Commission and the Economic Development Corporation.
Sub move.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. I will second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Two, two for it and one against it, so the motion passes. Thank you for all your team's time and just working together collectively to, to move this thing forward, so appreciate it. Hey, next up, we've got the Malcon Cost Allocation.
It's an annual, uh, contract that we have. They take care of all of our 4D reporting. We've used them for many of years. We have no issue with that.
Okay.
Than there at all.
Commissioners, any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Sub move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion passes three zero. Okay, the Farm Lease Amendment. I believe there was, um, some questions on the acreage of the, um, airport lease. So this is just amending it from one hundred and thirteen acres, which is specified in the lease, to one oh-three-point-one. So that the cost per acre is accurate for the farmers, so.
So the Commissioner's still taking, I guess we're still the ownership of the ground that even the Airport Board is, uh, taking it over. Correct. We're still under control of the contract.
Yeah, so they kind of administer it for us. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the update for, to reflect the accurate acreage.
Sub move.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Sorry, I lost you. I slipped it in with one of these things. Okay, next up, we got the Holiday Schedule. Just as a, uh, update to the new Commissioners and the audience, uh, the, we follow the state holiday, holiday schedule. It's what the Commissioners have always done in the past. And I believe it's no different than this year as well, so.
It's exactly the same as it was this year or this.
Yeah, there was a couple of questions and cases you guys wanted to look at with the holiday schedule of next year and the way it fell. The state did kind of change it to like Christmas, Christmas Day and the day after versus Christmas Eve and stuff. So if you guys want further review to look at those dates, I think we had also provided the state, um, calendar for next year as well. But, um, we just wanted your direction on how you wanted to do it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the day after is on a Friday, so remember, you, you two, you guys want Friday off or you want the Wednesday off?
When you're talking Christmas Eve, I'm not sure what people, how, I, I don't know.
What would you two like?
No, that's not our decision.
Tell the five hundred people watching.
Nope.
My vote's Friday off. I don't know.
I give you, I give you a four-day weekend.
Commissioners, what do you think? You want Friday off or Wednesday off? Nobody? You guys are brutal. Let's just work both days then. Canceling Christmas. Ron, you okay with Friday off?
Yes, I mean...
I, I, I would Friday give you a four-day holiday.
I'm gonna be off regardless.
All three?
I'll take the blame.
Okay, so what does mirror the holiday schedule for the state then? All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Sub move.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and motion passes three zero. Okay, next up, we got the Commissioners' calendar, um, subject to change based off the availability of the courthouse. But we will plan on keeping the, that's a good one.
We do have it with us, flipping over to our new, new schedule, yes, for, but it's tentative until, you know, pending all that, so.
So, uh, Commissioners elect, we used to meet, well, it's been all over, all over the board. We used to meet Mondays at eight AM, then we moved to Tuesdays. They used to meet in the evening at six, but then no one came, so then they moved it back because we were paying overtime to the, the staff.
I would, I'd just try to get their, their...
Yeah.
Opinion to where, when it should be.
So, uh, Tuesday, um, eight fifteen while the courthouse is closed, then it moves to nine. That just gives everyone a little bit of time to get ready. Really, we can change this as often as we want it to, as long as we have a two-week notice-ish. Are you guys okay with that same? The eight fifteen?
The only other push with that and just, you know, is whenever there's RDC meetings and other stuff, then it starts pushing it earlier. So typically why the nine has always been.
Yeah, so we, we can, we, we got three months to tweak that because, I mean, the eight fifteens have worked fairly well. And theoretically, if there's an RDC, we could push that to nine and then RDC, but, yeah. It does make the meetings a little bit more efficient. So, um, we haven't changed these through the years before, through the year before, but we can change it.
He would prefer to talk about it a little bit further before we set this and we can do, we can wait before we advertise it. I mean, it's...
Well, the first six months, we don't have an option. We've got to keep it at eight fifteen, right? So I'd say we go ahead and improve it, but just know you've got six months to change it. And as you've learned, it only takes two votes, so you guys get together while you can and figure it out. Um, okay, so I'll go ahead and, and accept a motion to approve the, the Commissioner's schedule. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion passes three zero. Okay, pay schedule, um, here's the pay schedule. Taking motion to approve.
I, I'll look at that one.
I'll accept the motion, I think is the same as...
It's based off of our two-week, bi-weekly pay.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor? Aye, and motion passes three zero. Highway meetings, we're gonna go back to twice monthly highway meetings. We'll do that at seven fifteen AM. And, uh, we'll, seven fif, and, and again, this is another tweak we can do. If we move to nine o'clock, we can move that to seven thirty, but... So let's, let's set a reminder in April to review the Commissioners' meeting schedule.
Okay.
And then we'll, would that be okay? We'll talk about it again in April, um, to tweak that, so. Uh, in the meantime, I'll go ahead and accept a motion, entertain a motion to approve the highway meetings.
Sub move.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion passes three zero. All right, moving right along, we got the Verizon plan here. Uh, we're gonna set up a Verizon account. Some of our team members have Verizon versus AT&amp;T. So I suggested we just do it like we do at my company. We have two corporate agreements with each entity. It's based off where you live in Davies County. The service is, is different. The cost is, basically.
So the goal here is that we have several different plans across the county departments. This will be merging everything together as one big ma, master plan, as suggested, um, by the Council for purposes of having a master account and then it all having departments, just like our credit cards set up and other stuff, yeah. So we've, Dale is, I'm working with Dale in the process as well. And this is the Verizon side of that. We have not started that with AT&amp;T.
Okay, excellent. Ron, any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Verizon agreement.
Sub move.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Is this, it's just a signature from, from you, it appears? Okay. Okay.
I got it.
Four Rivers Rehab Addendum?
Buggy permits first, but, um...
Oh, yeah, we'll go back to buggy permits. So we got a, uh, safety, Amish Safety Committee meeting tonight. In the past, I've, uh, asked us for kind of a standing agenda item every December for us to, um, evaluate the buggy permit fees, which then take effect January one. Most of those are, are sold during the May property tax payment timeline. So we've got a meeting tonight, um, just to show them some of the information. We've got about fifty miles of road that we've been upgraded in that area. So we've got some data on how much that's costing. Uh, we got the buggy permit numbers in. We're about, about the same number as we had last year, which was a high number. So we're holding pretty well there. But the number, the, it's, it's becoming pretty apparent that the buggy permit fee is going to have to increase.
Right.
Um, so the last meeting, I suggested maybe we consider the one ninety-five range. So I'm gonna take that number to them tonight just to let them know how we're coming up with that number. And then it's gonna have to go up from there over time because in six years, those fifty miles of roads are gonna be ready for repair. So we're gonna need...
Well, the number we were talking about with inflation is even greater.
So, the vehicle, people who drive a car pay about three fifty a year in fees. So two fifty a year would pay for those fifty roads to be upgraded in six years. That's just for those fifty miles of road. So we, we're probably looking at in the three hundred range where we, where we've got to get to at some point in the next few years.
I was up there about, oh, two months ago and almost got run over by a lawnmower with a big noter on it. I'm not sure if they had a permit or not.
It's, it's, it can get random up there. We can pick, my wife always says, pick your battles, so, um, so that's where we're at. I did, I did tell the Amish Safety Committee over the past few years, Steve, and, and, um, the sheriff was always with us, that I will, I will always come to them first to let them know before we make an official decision. I wanted to get that number out there, um, because we, yeah, we did start at sixty, but there was really little rhyme or reason. But we gotta get that number up, so, because those roads in six years...
It's amazing how much damage the horseshoes do to the roads. I mean, Chris is up there paving eight, or, uh, eight hundred north the other day. Within, within a day, it's already shined up white. So it's, it's, it's severe damage.
And the majority that I talk to don't have a problem with it. They're, they're easy to work with.
Yeah.
They understand.
I, I have yet to have anybody call with any negative response. And so far, the, the horse and buggy roads are lasting half as long as a non-horse and buggy.
Buggy road, right.
At eighty thousand dollars a mile to repair it, times fifty, divided by six years, that's, that's two hundred and fifty dollars per permit if there's three thousand permits. So, I mean, one ninety-five-ish is kind of what I'm throwing out there. That, I might come back and suggest a different number.
Cab off and go where we need to go?
I think eventually we're gonna have to do that. See how aggressive the two new Commissioners elects want to be.
I was gonna say, I'd save that decision until next year.
Yeah, we'll let them divide, guys. Um, so that's tonight. Uh, we'll bring that back.
You're gonna suggest one ninety-five then?
Yes, and it, it, Chris is cleaning up the numbers. We're gonna recalculate the numbers tonight, but if it's clearly higher, then we...
Well, I will be.
So, um, let me, let's just do the first meeting in December. Let's put the buggy permits back on that first meeting in December. That way, we don't run their Thanksgiving. Four Rivers, um, anything else on that?
Oh.
Okay, Four Rivers Rehab Addendum?
This is something that was, uh, requested by them in, in concept. We got it signed. They said that they approved it a while ago, but they returned it yesterday, signed and then notarized. So, um, it extends the term of that facility and that's all.
It looks like a lease agreement, so...
It's an addendum to the lease. So DSI, that's Four Rivers. The Commissioners own that.
Just the one building.
Okay.
Back behind, uh, General Reynolds.
Our General, yeah, okay. Any questions, Commissioners? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Sub move.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
And motion passes three zero. Okay. Anything from the audience?
Do you want to bring up a question about our next meeting? I know you have made a question about it.
Oh, yeah, the next meeting. So there's a hospital board meeting on our next meeting that I need to be at. So I'd love to see your smiling faces that week. So you guys want to change the meeting or do you want to keep it as is and just have me abs?
When is it?
The twenty...
Twenty-sixth.
Six, yeah. Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
You want to move it to the twenty-seventh?
The Monday.
Or the Monday, twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
That's the week of this.
And I'm okay either way. If you guys want to have the meeting on that Tuesday and... And I'm okay either way. If you guys want to have the meeting on that Tuesday and then...
I don't have any on my schedule for Monday.
Doesn't matter to me. They tend to be a little shorter when you're not here.
Because all the important stuff's on the meetings when I am here.
Right. We put them off till you're here.
That does need to be a short meeting because it's right before Thanksgiving and no one wants to meet. Uh, what would you guys like to do?
Monday, I'm fine with Monday. Are you fine with Monday?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move it to Monday.
And we'll keep it short.
25th.
Okay, that, we'll just have to make sure all the departments are aware for claims processes is gonna bump up our deadlines for claims.
Okay, and, and we can maybe make a motion on that to allow me to do whatever.
Anything extra special?
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that as well.
Just so we...
Just leave it the same?
Yeah, just leave it the same. That way we can cause little disruptions.
Okay.
Okay, so the next Commissioner meeting will be that Monday, the 25th, so 8:15.
So I'm not here, call me.
Yeah. Alright, anything from the audience? CNN Commissioners, anything? Alright, I'd entertain a motion to approve payroll claims and to adjourn the meeting.
Sub move.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.